And following that, the salute to the New Mexico state flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, to be a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. I'd like to invite everybody here to this work session. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the work session agenda. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Cullen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the work session agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Counselor Snyder, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Next is public input. Mr. Sadeo, is there any input? Okay, thank you. No input. Next is discussion. And so, everybody has the agenda for the discussion. Mr. Brown, would you like to start this off, please?
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to apologize, bringing the budget so late to you. It was, the reason for that was because with the transition to the new water billing software, it's also the cash receipt software, so it actually affects almost all the funds as we bring in revenue. So, I want to commend Lori, I mean Anita, who did the majority of all this work, Lori and Randy, for all the work that they did, because it's been a nightmare for them the last two months. In fact, they've been coming to work on the weekends, working late, and they actually finished it last week, right? We got the numbers in early last week. And so, these are un-audited numbers for 26 beginning balances, but they are reconciled numbers. They usually don't change very much from what you'll see here. Some things that are going to be affecting the budget this next year, of course, what's going on nationally with the changes at the federal level, that potentially could also cause some major changes at the state level. And if that happens, in my experience in past years, is the state usually goes after and tries to go after municipalities and counties probably the most to recover their funds, and I'm really worried about whole town lists next year, and that'll be a nightmare. The, also on top of that, there was a 22% rate increase on the health insurance, the employee health insurance. There was a decrease of 10% on the dental and the vision, but that, those, that's had a very small impact, so I would say that the average increase was about 18% on the health insurance. The state also increased the contribution on the employee as well as the municipality of 1.5%. So, because we also pay 75% of the employees' insurance, we also, our increase was probably closer to 75, 0.75% of a increase. So, those were actually pretty big increases, and most of the increases you see on the budgets in the general fund are attributed to that. There are really not very many changes as far as personnel, the number of personnel. In the rec center, we did include personnel costs last year, just in case we were able to start last fiscal year, which we never, it wasn't possible. Hopefully by mid-August, we'll be able to open the rec center. So, also, you know, there was a lot of activity last year, along with the change of the software, as you'll see, it was the largest overall budget we've ever had. And a big portion of that was grants. And, you know, with all of the changeover in the administration that's going to be happening starting next month, I'm going to start recommending to the council and the staff that we start slowing down and applying for some large grants over the next few years. They, the state and federal, well, federal governments already started that for us, but the state may also do that. But hopefully, we can go ahead and slow down, give the staff time to get on their feet and understand exactly what's happening. You know, myself and Anita, we're not gonna, we're not dying, I hope. We'll be around and we'll be able to help if necessary. So, with that, do you have any questions on anything I've said to this point?
You know, I'm thinking the best way to go about discussing this is to take them one page at a time at first, in case anyone has any pressing questions they want to ask.
Mayor, is it okay, based on what I've said and explained why I said it, to this point, that's why I'm asking the question?
Mr. Chair? I just had one question, just based on what's been said already. May I ask?
Yeah.
For the 22% increase in healthcare premiums, is that insurance going to be a part of the new mix that we have with Palms and Associates, or is that going to be with another partner?
No, that's with the state pool.
State pool, great. Just wanted to go.
Yeah. Okay, are you ready to, go?
I just have a question. Alex, can you just, you know, like, give the public an idea of how many projects, the total money amount this year that we were working on?
The total budget last year was just over $70 million.
And don't we have, didn't you tell me that we had like $42,000, I mean, $42 million in budgets, projects that we're currently working on this year?
That was last year. It was, it was, it was, it wasn't quite that high after going and looking at it, but as you'll see, we've got about $17 million of projects this year. So, things are slowing down a little bit, but not a whole lot. So, I'm trying to mute this thing. Okay. Can I answer your question? Okay. Can I go ahead and start?
I'm assuming everybody read through this, so what I'd like to do is if anybody has any specific questions from Mr. Brown, let's ask them now, and then we can have discussion amongst ourselves as well. And you don't need to, you don't need to wait, that's the way I'd like to do it. And you don't need to wait to be recognized. Counselor Cullen?
I don't believe Mr. Brown was done with his presentation, was he?
No, I'm fine with you asking questions as we go, it doesn't matter to you.
Would you like to do the presentation, or?
Yeah, I'll start with the presentation, and if the council can ask questions as they come up.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the first page, you'll see a history of grocery seats taxes. For '23, '24, and '25, those are actual numbers that we received from those, for those three different years. Last year, we received $17,644,203 in grocery seats tax total through the entire fiscal year, and I was able to get that because it's already into the new fiscal year, and we've actually received our first check for the new fiscal year. So, this budget is basically based on a grocery seats estimate for next year with a slight decrease of $17,418,860. So, it's basically about a 1% decrease. Usually, I try to do the last three years' average, but when I did that, it brought it down to like $16,600,000 and some thousand dollars, and that would have been too conservative based on the fact that I, we also had to ensure that we pay for the health insurance and the para. On top of that, you know, I just want to state that this budget this year is going to be very tight because of these things. I'm going to be watching, and a lot of those additional things, sponsorships and different programs, probably going to be shying away from doing them this year, just to make sure that we, we know exactly where we're at and what's happening with every, all the different things that are happening in the, in the country and locally. Now, general, the general fund, total revenues was, they're made up of different, three, four different major categories for the general fund. Of course, the first is grocery seats taxes, then there's property taxes, and then there's franchise fees, and then there's all the other fees that we charge, like swimming pool, entry fees, library fees, different things like that. So, as you can see, grocery seats are very important. And if, if grocery seats start being impacted, we're going to have to make some major changes immediately, we can't wait. And I've done that all the years that I've been the manager, so as soon as we start seeing decreases in revenue, I will get with you and we will start having discussions on potential decreases if necessary. Okay? Do you have any questions on any of this?
Counselor Prin?
For revenue decreases and sort of, you know, while waiting for those numbers, generally, if we're going to be seeing things like this in the broader news, we're looking at consumer confidence, we're looking at different types of metrics that are going to be kind of happening on a week-over-week basis. I know the plans are changing on a week-over-week basis, but just as far as if we are going to see revisions, I'm generally looking for consumer confidence. Is there anything else that's worth kind of paying attention to in any of the national statistics?
I think the tariffs are, well, consumer confidence is all that's built into that. So, yeah, I mean, give you an example of what I was looking at. So, in April, the announcement of the tariffs, you know, people started doing some panic buying, so we figured the revenues were going to increase a little bit then. But then in May, people started pulling back because that's when the start, the tariffs started being put in place. Well, the check that we received this month actually was 2% above last year. So, so the, there are additional things that are still happening, you know, although there are still like, most, the largest category, of course, is retail purchases. That's where consumer confidence really impacts us. But on top of that, we also had construction projects that are going on, for instance, the rec center, which is a big one. In fact, for instance, we made some payments in July, and the payments we made were just over $1.5 million on the rec center. And that project is, well, of course, is winding down. We've got some other projects, of course, City Hall, which is about 1.4, I believe, and Golf Park, CDBG, the Colonias, which will be the Swan Street project, and we'll talk about those more later on. But those aren't consumer confidence, that's about grants and stuff like that. So, there's a combination of things going on. And, and also, you know, I thought, you know, we've also got to think about an additional thing that I didn't mention in upfront was, you know, the mine has announced that they're going to scale back operations in August at Tyrone. But they've got enough openings at Chino to absorb them all. So, hopefully that happens. Also on top of that, you know, in the last few months, copper has risen to an all-time high, and so that could actually protect, potentially impact us positively on this side. So, you know, there's a lot to watch as we're going on. Okay, next is transfers out is something, is a big number. A lot of that money goes to, the next page, general fund expenses and transfers. If you look at the one I gave you, it's the next page. So, the transfers out this year is budgeted 1, 3.15, well, basically, $3.16 million. Most of that is for grants, debt service, part of it is going to the golf course. So, that's a pretty big number this year. As you can see, the actual operating expenses went down a little bit from last year. Well, these, last year was actual number, so what happens is, the difference between the 14.16 million that we're seeing this year and the 15.17 million that we saw last year is the fact that we did a lot of big one-time purchases with the excess revenue that came in above projections. So, that's, that's where that came from, and as you can see, the changes between last year and this year. This year, we're expecting to beginning, begin the year with a cash balance in the general fund of $1.3 million, total revenues of 17.2, oh no. Yeah, 17.286 million, transfers out of 3.159 million, expenses at 14.158 million, leaving us an ending cash balance of $1.23 million, and a required cash match, so that the state will approve the budget, is $1.18 million. So, that leaves us in excess of $115,000. So, it's fairly tight, you know, on top of everything, as I'm talking, I'm starting to remember things, I apologize. But we also have the three unions. All three contracts have expired, and we've been in negotiations. Because of the uncertainty, we have not been able, I've not been really able to give them some, some real accurate numbers as to what we might be willing to negotiate and give them over the next year. And I've already told them that, that this will be a one-year contract, whatever we end up doing because of the uncertainty. Plus, we've been meeting the last few months, a couple times a month, and then from now until, for the next couple of months, we'll be meeting once a month after we receive our grocery seats taxes. So, I can see if there's any strength in grocery seats tax. If there is, then I would like to work with them to get them some more money, because of course, like everybody else, their dollar's going, not going as far as it did last year or the year before. So, we need to work with them to ensure that they, they are made as whole as we possibly can, while, of course, continuing to provide the services that we are, are supposed to provide our communities with their tax dollars. So, on the next page, you'll be able to see the changes in the operating costs, the budgets for each of the departments. The majority of the increases have solely to do with the increased cost of, of the insurance and para. Some of the, some of the departments didn't increase very much or actually stayed the same, and a lot of that's due to the fact that turnover in employees. Bring me on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may request, while Mr. Brown is providing us with the updates, if he can just label, if he can just state the name at the top of the page, sometimes these are getting shuffled around. I believe we're looking at expense summary, general fund?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, with that, do you have any questions on the general fund's expenses? Yes, sir.
You know, what's actually the legislating?
That is actually for, for you guys, the expenses for your travel and all those training, travel. That's basically you guys.
Okay.
Since you, since, and it's all operational costs because you guys don't get paid. So, yeah, it's travel and training.
Counsel, give it.
So, just as far as I'm seeing here, for what we had budgeted fiscal year '25 to ' '26, we're going to be doing another $521,000 in added expenditures on that one, 225 of that's for the police department, 202 of that's for the fire department, and then we're adding another $47,000 for the rec sector. Those seem to be the biggest line item changes that we're looking at that cover the vast majority of what we're, sorry. Thank you.
Yes, and then if we are able to give the employees increases, that'll be across the board, I mean, to the unions, all three unions. We did, we did include cost of living increases that are currently in their contracts, even though they're expired, we are going to abide by those contracts. We did give them the cost of living increases, and we gave the exempt employees the same cost of living increase as EFSME. Okay? So, any more questions on that? None? Okay, so, the water sewer fund, because there are, a big portion of their budget is operational costs, there are increases to the operating expenses. But the one thing that we are going to have to do is because there are so, this budget is more tied to increased expenses because there's so much operating expense in the water sewer fund. So, I'm going to propose a 6% rate increase for water to, and when we do that, it's the same rate increase, percentage rate increase to in-town, out-of-town, as well as to the water associations. So, everybody is lumped into that same increase. Like I said, the majority of the personnel salary and employee benefit costs, those, those were primarily insurance and para. The operating costs, we did increase most of them because of inflation, basically. Do you have any questions on that? And the transfers out are primarily for grants and debt service?
Just kind of questioning about the flat rate across both the ETJ and what we have in town and with the associations. We do have differing costs based on how far from the central system we have people accessing our water supply.
Yes.
Is it possible, or have we ever done anything where, because of the lower density that we have towards the edges of town, is that something then that can get factored in then for the cost, or is that something that we've ever done, or it's always been?
It's, it's, it was done a long time ago. So, when the water associations were, rates were negotiated, even before me, they would negotiate based on that, how far, how much it was going to cost, for instance, the Orange Valley Water Association and Ty, well, we're tied with, our hands are tied with Tyrone. But the Orange Valley Water Association, they're higher than Roseville. Pinus altos is higher than both of them because of the cost to get the water to them, and the fact that, it is built in, the fact that the water comes through our water system before it actually goes out to them. So, it does put wear and tear on our water system, increase cost, increased distribution cost to get it to them. So, that has built, in fact, I will include a rate, the rate sheet, I will get that to you for the budget council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. The only.
The first one that he gave us was out of order. He gave us a second one, see, that's in order.
Right, 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 yeah. Okay, so, just, just so, two clarifications. Because Tyrone, Tyrone, the, when Tyrone is absorbed as a water association, I don't know if it was Kennebec or Phelps Dodge at the time, gave the town some water rights in order for us to take them in. But as a condition of that contribution, we could only, there was a condition set that we could only charge them 10% more than we charge in-town residents. So, we're tied to that, and that's a perpetual agreement. Now, the ETZ residents, up until about 15 years ago, they were always paying double in-town rates. That's a bit, quite a bit too much. So, as of 15 years ago, I started giving them the same rate, same rate increase, percentage rate increases as in-town rates. So, instead of it being doubled, it has been less than double every year. So, just to be a lot fairer, because it doesn't cost that much. Now, the sanitation fund.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I just got one other question. What about water taps and that sort of thing? Are you going to increase 6% on that as well?
No, that, that is built into the, to the ordinance already. So, there are automatic rate increases that are in the ordinances already, and we're tied to that ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we can change, we can increase water rates when the budget is approved, water and sanitation rates when the budget is approved, because it is in, in the utility ordinance that the rates can be changed during the adoption of the budget. Now, the, the water taps and all that, you would have to do a ordinance to change that. So, it would have to have two council meetings, take more than a month to do it. But as we develop the budget, we can increase the rates to adopt the budget with the resolution, and it's in the utility ordinance like that. Okay? Any more questions? No? Okay, so, I am not recommending any rate increases for the sanitation fund. We, after we, we did our audit that, that was included in the, with the new software, which our timing wasn't, we should have waited on that so we, so the customers could have seen it, a separation between the new water bill and then the updated audit costs for the sanitation. So, we did find a lot of residences with multiple containers, and those that have accepted to continue paying for them, they are the ones covering the cost of the additional cost that were, was necessary. And actually, we were not going to meet this 1.5 million or 2.3.126 million, we were not going to, well, last year, I should say, $3.1 million total. We were not going to meet that number this last fiscal year, we were a little bit short on that. But once we, we did that audit, we will be able to meet that. Because they weren't, there's not a whole lot of changes in the sanitation revenue because throughout the fiscal year, the only thing that changes is when people come in and request additional containers or gives back containers or opens and, or shuts off their, their service. That's the only changes that we really get in the sanitation fund as far as revenue, like, unlike the utility fund, where you have huge changes from the winter to the summer and all those, and especially last year, being so dry, the revenues did come in a little bit better, and that helped us a little bit last year, was that? Okay. So, the majority of the changes there are.
Counselor Cullen?
I just have a question, the environmental line, is that a typo at the end? That there's two twos now instead of one?
Oh, yeah, it is a, it should be 272,000.
Thanks.
And then, Mayor Blatter? Mayor Blatter?
Hang on, just a minute. Does that answer your question, Counsel?
Yes.
Counsel Prin?
And then, I'm just assuming also, for the total expenditures, we have 3.9 million on this, but that should just be 2.9 million from the total expenditures.
Yes, it's 2.9 million, I apologize.
No, no, it's okay. And just as a point for thinking and planning on it, since the fires this year, a number of neighbors have been kind of getting into the Firewise program work, and just the amount of extra calls that I know are happening as far as picking up yard waste and making sure that when we're clearing debris, and while people are kind of prepping their homes, depending on what the next season's going to look like, I just want to make sure then that we just kind of start thinking about that for how sanitation fund could get structured, so we can facilitate that as much as possible.
Well, yeah, I, I think, so, of course, all residents who have utility service and pay for the garbage and tipping fees, they can take up to a ton of trash to the landfill every month without being built. So, if they do do that, they can take their, their yard waste and all that out to the landfill, and the town will cover the cost. I will be working with the, with the landfill, because now with the fires, Universal Waste Two is the operator out at the landfill, is working on cleaning debris out at, in, out at the burn scar, and all those for the flooding and all those types of things. So, I believe they have a staging area at the, at the, at Fowler Brothers in Yemidus, as well as at the landfill. And so, a lot of that waste will not even have to be put into the, to the landfill, it will be disposed of and grinded up as the other waste is from the, from the fire. And so, what's going to happen is, all the waste from the fire is going to be taken to the, ultimately taken to the landfill and grinded up, and then used as cover for the landfill. So, it's actually not going to technically be put into the landfill and then try to compact it, which is a problem, because there's a lot of airspace that is lost. So, we save a lot of airspace and, there's a lot of benefit to taking it out of the landfill. Okay?
Any other questions? Of course, Mr. Brown.
Okay, so, for the total budget this year, we're looking at $62,127,000, which is an $8 million decrease from last year. Any questions there? No? Okay, and I'm going to go to the capital funds next. So, at the very end, the last second page, you'll see that the total expenditures, budget expenditures for capital projects, the budget expenditures for capital projects this year are 17,246,000 dollars. The vast majority of, of these projects are, are, uh, grant projects. There are some, yeah, there are grants, Capital Outlay, um, Colonius, DOT, uh, these are all projects that will or come before you, most of them, most all of them will come before you or have come before you. Uh, do you have any questions on any of these projects?
Councilor Prince?
Just matching the notes that I have here. Um, so just for taking a quick look, we are starting on the lines that have CDBG projects.
Yes.
On the, that we have over here. Uh, yeah, just the broadest kinds of strokes that we have for this year's budget, um, Chihuahua Hills Water Improvement, uh, 750,000 expected revenue on that one so that we can budget in. Uh, we've got, uh, Waterworks Rec Center, uh, confirming for Golf Park, uh, C slash H City Hall?
Yes.
Perfect. NMFA projects, the lift station for Mill Road for everything we want to do presumably for the redundant line that we're talking about for-
That's the, that's the project that we, we brought the bid to you and we had to reject because it was over. Um, in fact, uh, the Colonius Board is meeting today or tomorrow, uh, for supplemental funding for that project and a couple of other projects that, um, needed additional funding.
The Swan Street Survey Design, that's North Swan Street, we were having to also kind of push that project just a little bit while we were waiting to see how the dust was going to settle around the tariffs that we were seeing this past spring, same project?
No, that, that's actual design right now.
Okay.
That's designed and then we did receive a Colonius grant for that. And hopefully by the end of the month, we should, uh, re, uh, find out about a TPF funding. So we are hoping to get to the city limits with, at Monswan if, if we are able to get both of those.
Then, uh, Regional Water Project, uh, we're going to be continuing along that project. That's going to be probably one of our bigger ones just over this year.
Yes, and, and, and the match for that project initially, that came from our ARPA funds and then, uh, we did apply for Colonius grant. That money, uh, we did receive it for the Santa Clara well. The match for that is all coming from the Interstate Stream Commission. Okay? So we will not have to pay anything out of pocket for that one.
Those are all the ones that I have for NMFA projects unless anyone else has any. Then the last big projects I'm seeing for state funded ones, housing infrastructure, Sheriff Posse Road feasibility, um, Little Walnut DOT, Waterworks again, and those that seem to be the big ones that we have lined up then for the next year. Uh, and I'm just kind of looking at the ones that are over 300,000. To your mind, beyond those projects, were there any other ones that were kind of standing out to you for how we're going to be funding?
Uh, no. No, I, like I said, this next year, uh, I'm planning on not applying for so many grants, especially the big ones to help future staff being able to get their feet under, under them. I pushed them very hard, uh, and I need to have to get her hair colored before she came.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, next is the, uh, Special Revenue Fund. These are all mostly, uh, grants, uh, a lot of them don't have to come to you. I think the, uh, you know, corrections, uh, that, that is some funding that we get from the Muse Court for some of the fees that they, they raise and we use that for prisoner housing. Our prisoner housing isn't but, uh, a couple hundred to 600 dollars a month. It's not very much. Uh, fire protection and EMS, EMS has, that, that grant has increased substantially over the last few years. Probably four or five years ago, that was about 14,000 a year. And as you can see, this next year is projected to be, um, 83,000 dollars. So to help, yeah, that, you remember how small it was before?
That's, that's a big increase.
Law enforcement protection, uh, fire protection, lodgers tax, uh, uh, we're projecting close to 400,000 dollars in revenue next year. So, um, the lodges tax has been pretty good. Gas tax, which is a couple cents off of every gallon of, of gas that's, that's sold in Silver City as well as a one eighth of a percent of gross seats taxes is dedicated to that as well. And we do say, pay for a little bit of grant match out of that as well. And then do you have any questions on any of the other grants? I believe that Counselor Snyder had some questions.
I've got, I've got a question.
What?
Uh, on the state grants, I always wonder if you could expand on what the Stone Garden Grant actually is.
Grant counties, the fiscal agents under Border Patrol and Customs. Um, I just want to make it clear that this grant is for interdiction on the highways. There are specific areas that Border Patrol will assign us to. We're there for drug interdiction, human trafficking, violent crime, and that's what this grant is utilized for. If we come across illegals, they have same rights as anybody else. We cannot prolong the stop. We have to just work within the scope of our duties. If we come across illegal, we'll notify Border Patrol. However, if they're too far out, we have to let them go. We, we can't prolong a stop and they have civil rights just like anybody else. I just want to be clear about that.
Okay, so they won't be detained then? That's what you're saying?
No, we can detain them for a long period of time just because they're illegal. If they're committing crimes, state, state law, we're, will enforce the state laws. That's what, that's what this grant is specifically for and in turn helps Border Patrol with drug trafficking, human trafficking.
So... So we're, you're not assisting ICE then with?
No, we're not, we're, this isn't utilized to just specifically target illegals. That's not what this is for and I want to be very clear on that.
And then what are, what are actually the requirements of the grant that we need, the town needs to fulfill?
I'm not understanding your question.
Well, you, you get the grant, uh, there's probably certain stipulations that must be fulfilled.
Well, we, we work under our policies. We have to provide Border Patrol the quarterly report. We get reimbursed. We get reimbursed the funds, whatever overtime funding that's utilized. Other than that, I'm not understanding.
And, and I, I believe that you're called out at the request of Border Patrol and Grant County?
Yeah, so there, we, there is an operational plan that's in place. There's a MOU that we have if you guys would like to see. Um, we do call in and again, we're assigned certain areas on the highways for interdiction.
And I guess I, I just have one more question. You know, we're always seeming to be short-staffed and stuff. You know, how does this affect staffing and will, will it be, will the town police actually go out of city limits to do any of this work?
So I'll start with staffing. So the main priority is the town of Silver City. So we'll make sure that there are cops available for them in the municipality. This is overtime funding with there's additional officers that we can utilize outside of the city limits and in, within the county boundaries. So yeah, we'll be outside of the two city limits, but I can tell you that a lot of this revenue we haven't been able to spend because our priority is working within the town limits.
Counselor Prince?
You used the word illegals. What does the Silver City Police Department do to ascertain somebody's citizenship status?
We're not supposed to ask that question. We'll ask for driver's license, just like anybody else, insurance registration and do an interdiction stop.
When you say "we," um, is that including the work that you're doing with Border Patrol Homeland Security?
Okay, so we're working under the scope of our policies. So anybody that we come across, illegal or not, if they commit a crime, we enforce the crime within state law. I don't know how else to explain that to you because there's, this isn't specifically, let's look for illegals. That's not what this is for. They're interdiction stops, human trafficking, drug trafficking, violent crime. That's what this is for because of all you know, as all of you know, we got FENAL pouring into our communities. We're trying to get this, this stuff under control, which is difficult to do.
A hundred percent. I just, I think the concern is that while working towards regular interdiction, it's going to put our police officers in situations where they're going to have to start to ascertain those conditions. And we've had that happen this year. Um, and to my understanding, when we've had folks that were picked up that were concerned that we're being trafficked, they didn't interact with our systems. Like for wellness, we have folks that are getting sent to the hospital usually to be able to get a professional.
I'm not understanding what you're asking.
So I, I think he's referring to the call in Hurley where they found the illegals and, and then they were turned over to Homeland Security?
Well, it sounds as though we're not checking, uh, we, we don't really have a methodology for being able to check somebody's says. There were 25 people that were found in the back of a box truck that were assumed to be-
Yeah, so Hurley follows their policies.
Right.
We follow our policies, which is not to ask.
Right, and if we're finding people, typically they're going to interact at the hospital, right? We're going to check out and make sure everyone's doing okay with people that are medically trained.
They're not going to call us to the hospital if, if, the way I'm understanding it, we're not going to interfere with any of that?
I think he's worried that we're going to turn them over to the hospital, then the hospital's going to turn them in.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that type of procedure at all.
Uh, I'm concerned that they're just going to get handed straight over to Border Patrol and we're seeing some pretty scary situations with how Border Patrol is handling, folks are getting handed over to them.
Okay, so-
I would hope that they would get the same medical attention whether or not they speak English or not, we can ascertain citizenship.
Yes, okay, that's your question. Yes, they will not be treated any differently than any US citizen. Again, they have the same rights as soon as they cross over, they have civil rights and we have to treat them as such, just like anybody else and follow protocol just like anybody else.
Perfect.
Counselor Cunnell, do you have any-
The chief answered it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Brown, go ahead, please.
Um, going through the, um, the, uh, Special Revenue Funds, um... Do you have any questions on any of the other ones?
Mayor Leder?
Counselor Prince?
Um, just for the acronyms that we have, um, the three, uh, just want to get some understanding that we're going to be seeing money on the JAG Grant, uh, the HIDTA Grant and the JJAC Grant.
Okay, go ahead and explain JAG and HIDA.
Okay, the, uh, just as a sense, that is state funded. That also targets narcotics, violent crime, same thing, it's just we put an opposite plan together, we, it's overtime funded and we get reimbursed. So if we have certain felony warrants out there that we need to serve, we'll use this funding. If we have, um, narcotics violations that there's individuals with warrants out there or search warrants, we'll use this line up for it. And then as far as HIDA, um, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Agency is out of debt mix. So we're at a Region Seven Task Force, we're part of that task force. We assign, um, agents to that task force and they provide funding. Again, that is specifically utilized for narcotics, but of course, violent crime goes, does go hand in hand and private property crime with narcotics. So we utilize that funding for that also.
The J-JAG Grant is for Ju- Justice, um, that is the JPO programs through, um, they used to be through Gary Staley and, but it's through Det- Detmar or something. They're located, uh, up at the, uh, the ultra extended, the portable building, that's where, and then they're partly using the ultra extended as well for those programs. And that comes through the district court.
Counselor Sylar?
Yeah, I, I'd heard on the, on the JAG Grant, can, that it would be possible to use some of that money for like a crisis intervention team? Is that possible or is that something I?
Hmm, to my knowledge, no, and I usually attend those meetings and we have to and send quarterly reports specifically for that, no. Not to my knowledge.
Any more questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
And then the next one is the Total Debt Service. These are all the loans that, that we have. The majority of them are, uh, are, uh, are Colonius grants and they're small grants. I mean loans, but we do have our, our bonds out there. Do you have any questions on any of them?
Any questions or?
And then we, we do have two other categories of, of funds, of trust and agency which we hold, basically funds we hold for other agencies. And then the American Recovery Funds and that's the last of the money that we have in, uh, ARPA, uh, that they're funding. Is that it? And with that, do you have any questions or anything that you want me to bring for the council meeting? Other than the rates?
By the way, Mr. Brown, thank you for bringing, uh, Laurie and Anita with you.
My biggest one, I'm not comfortable with us taking Homeland Security money this year. If there was an opportunity, if we could explore what it would look like for us to cut our Stone Garden Grant, um, I would really entertain that and just want to see if that's a possibility over this weekend.
Well, I, I think we've already spent some, so if we, if we, if we, uh, give the grant back, we're going to lose that funds.
As I understand it, it looks like we're 2,179 already in having taken it and we're looking at a $225,000 police budget increase. It's 1%. Um, it doesn't seem like it's going to be too much if we needed to cut that out this year.
I guess my concern would be that this would be similar to other grants that we applied for, like, for example, I'm going to use the museum. We applied for, um, down from the humanities grant and then we, for several reasons, no longer have that grant, but now we're not able to apply for it later on. So I would wonder if that would be something that would be a problem in this case as well?
Yes, it would be because we've been trying to get into this grant for several years. This is our first year and we can get equipment out of this grant as long as we go out there and we, we produce, again, narcotics, violent crime, human trafficking, drug trafficking. This could be detrimental to us if you want to take that away from us. So I would ask that you would not do that and it would be detrimental to our community. Again, drug trafficking, human tra- trafficking and violent crime, that's what we're after.
Anything else? Counselor Prince?
This grant has been in operation across the country and I've not seen any data that's shown that it's done anything effective to be able to slow or stop any of the challenges that we're looking at. And a hundred percent drug trafficking, absolutely want to make sure then that we're doing all that we can to be able to start limiting access in our community. Some of the concerns that are coming up right now with Homeland Security and particularly with giving them direct access with equipment to our officers for them to operate unmonitored, uh, unsupervised, I have some very deep concerns based on some of the things we're seeing across the country with how Homeland Security is operating. I don't think that 28,000 dollars is worth it for the cost to our community based on how much else we're spending.
No, I disagree. That's just where I stand.
Yeah, I think I'd agree with Counselor Prince on that. We should look at it a little bit more closely.
Counselor Ben Cunnell?
Yeah, I don't think 28,000 dollars is, is a lot of money when we can, like the chief said, we got a drug po- problem right now and, uh, I don't think it would benefit us by trying to just get rid of that at all. And a real quick, quick question, Chief. With this grant, are you able to buy, get equipment for your officers?
Absolutely, you can get, again, this is our first year, so it's like one of those prove it times, which I'm very confident that we will prove that. We're going to impact the community, but yeah, eventually you can get police cars, you can get, you know, radars, um, traffic monitors, there's, uh, license plate readers is huge. Do some research on the license plate readers and how much crime is impacted with those. That's what I look at long-term and what we can get into, what, what, how, what's going to benefit this community. So for right now, it's 28 grand. Later on, it could be a lot bigger, that'll impact our community a lot, much more.
Counselor Sylar?
Yeah, he- hearing you say that this is the first year and that it can grow, um, I would like to see some data before we make a decision. I feel like, you know, if you're already seeing positive things from this and it's something that we can, you know, see, that'll be great. But my concern will still be the same is if it's a grant that we apply for and then we cannot, never apply for it again and it's something we might need in the future, then we need to think about that because, you know, it's not just about today, what's going on in this country, it's what's happening four years from now when we have a new president. So.
Counselor Sylar?
Yeah, can you get training out of this grant?
The biggest thing is, hmm, I'm not too sure. You know, I know we have to, we have to go through specific training in order to work it, but I'd have to double check that. I'm not too sure off the top of my head.
You know, I'm just going along those lines, you know, would, would you be able to get trained, you know, the officers maybe in immigration law or something so that they make sure when they do make a stop?
No, there, there's training involved before we, they, we can even work it. A lot of that stuff, again, and they cover, we work on, operate under our policies and we're enforcing state law.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Counsel Ben Cunnell?
Real, well, something real quick, you know, uh, somebody may know that I'm in, I, I work, uh, part-time, it's just- as a substitute teacher in the schools, and I, I have had two kids that were, that died as a result of being exposed to fentanyl, so it, it, it hits me pers- personally now, when I get to know these kids on a day-to-day basis and get to know some of their families. So I would like to see this, uh, continue. I think it's a good thing. Like I said earlier, I don't think 28,000 dollars is a lot. It's not.
To, to put this, yeah, it's also about 400, 460 hours of overtime. And split between 21 officers during 26 pay periods, that's actually a couple hours for each officer through the entire fiscal year.
Then, Mayor Lender?
Counselor Prince?
Then on that note then, um, you know, one of the things to pay attention to, right, is going to be the opioid settlement money, that we see it's moving across the country right now, I think through Purdue and, uh, Saffler, federal lawsuits. Um, do we have that reflected in our budgets yet? Is that what we're already counting? No.
We haven't seen any of that.
Uh, do we have any word on any of the timetable for that?
I'll have to find out, because I have not heard anything about that.
Have you heard anything yet about that, Chief Purdue?
No.
Okay, just wanted to check. Uh, there are some federal funds that are available still for a lawsuit, just due to the OxyContin marketing that did a lot to increase opioid usage in the country. Uh, there was liability that was found on that, and that we should be starting to see some of that money coming in this year and next year. Uh, just as far as then making sure then that the community is able to address some of the concerns with opioid usage. Uh, I was hoping that we could start to maybe look into that if we're going to start seeing that this year.
Well, that would come through the state.
Okay.
To, to the state, to the, to the local governments. And the state has not put anything out on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Connaught?
Um, just for the municipal point of view, uh, there is going to be very little that we get from the state probably this year. As municipalities, anything extra probably is going to happen, and they are coming for us. We know it. So I would say that anything extra from the state, we should probably not expect at all at this point.
Any other comments?
So if that's the case, I would think that they would, whatever opioid settlement money they receive, they would use for the state police and not filter it down to the local communities to supplement themselves, because that's the standard MO.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Brown, do you have any final comments or observations?
Uh, no, sir, not right now.
Well, this concludes the items on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second is stated.
Thanks, everybody, for being here. Mr. Brown, thank you and your staff for the tremendous number of hours that y'all have put into this. We are hereby adjourned.